Oh, no, not this again.
The meeting to order at. Dan, you want to go ahead and start? Okay. Okay, welcome, everybody. This is the Ternigan Community Council, February 6, 2025 Zoom meeting. And I am Kathy Gleason, President of Ternigan Community Council, and I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. So I haven't introduced or shared with our board members in a few months, and I apologize for that because they're they're the backbone of this group. So Karen Platnikoff is our Vice President. And let's see, Chris, are you on? Chris Havich is our secretary, but I don't see him joining us yet. And Kathleen. I was gonna say, Kathleen McCoy, she is our secretary officially. Now she can write checks and spend all the money in our bank account as of today.
Treasurer.
Treasurer.
Treasurer, what did I say?
Secretary.
Okay, I apologize. Yeah, treasurer. So she can write checks. And then we have our two board members at large, John Isaacs and Lamar Cotton. So thank you for helping out with everything this year. Okay, so I'd like a motion to approve the agenda. So moved. Okay. So I didn't catch who moved.
Kathleen moved, and I think.
Oh.
John second.
Okay. And I do have a couple of additions to the agenda as well as rearranging the deck chairs as far as the order. So firstly, since our Assembly member Cameron is going to need to leave early, let's go ahead and move the Assembly Report below announcements. And the second one is adding under the Executive Board Report, just an update on the indigenous place markers within Ternigan Parks. And thirdly, add update to the Fish Creek Trail Connection project under Land Use Committee down at the bottom of the agenda. So with those amendments, does anybody have any objection to any of those amendments? If not, then is there any objection to approving the agenda as amended? Okay, great. Passes with amendment. Amendments. And then also, we have the minutes of the January 9, 2025 meeting last month, provided by Chris Havich. And thank you, Chris, for providing the backbone of minutes for us to review and approve. So could I have a motion from someone to approve the January 9 minutes? Anybody?
So moved.
Please. Dan, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Karen.
Thank you, Karen. Does anybody have any objections to approval of the minutes as presented? Okay, then minutes are approved. Does anybody have any announcements? Usually I have some, but I didn't catch anything that fell into that category for this meeting. So does anybody have any announcements they want to share? Okay, then let's go ahead and move on to the Assembly Report. So thank you, Cameron, again for joining us this evening.
Hey, everybody. Yeah. Let's see, so a few things I wanted to make sure that folks are aware of. So my role on the Assembly has been really focused around public safety and about homelessness and really thinking about those two areas. So I want to talk about that a little bit. And then I want to just also share just some some things about a couple of other areas like the capital improvement planning that's going to happen tomorrow and also sales tax as it be. Just wanted to share that, that, you know, after the number of officer-involved shootings that happened late last year, a few things happened. The mayor called for an independent review of that particular case, and we got the results of that. And out of that came a number of recommendations for policy improvements for the department. We heard about that this last week. And then the other recommendation or action by the mayor was to engage an external independent review of the Anchorage Police Department and looking at all of their sort of policies and in training to look at if there are things that we can do to continue to improve. So that RFP is being finalized and will go out soon. And we anticipate the results of that being anywhere from six to eight months from now. But and then the third thing, and then in the public safety, is that there's just a tremendous amount of effort going on right now to really both repair the relationship in some ways between the Anchorage Police Department and then the community, but also to really think about how we can continue to improve as a police department. So I've been involved in that, and it's all very challenging and sensitive work, as you can imagine, but really, really important. And so the a few, few things to keep on your radar. We are the Public Safety Commission that was sunsetted last year. We're working on bringing that back as a way to have a really have a really tangible way for the community to be more involved in what's happening with our public safety, not just the police, but fire and the Department of Law. So that, we're going to launch a process here in the next month where we're going to start to engage with the community much more about about what kind of involvement they would like to have and what they feel like that that commission could do to be actual helpful in terms of both being informative for the police department and other public safety, but also having real, true, authentic involvement in what's going on. So that there's a lot happening in that world. And just, I just want to make sure folks know that that it's really sensitive because we really, I think we have one of the most amazing police departments in the country here in Alaska. And we also have a department that I think has gone through a lot of changes over the last few years. And so it's important that we're looking at how to improve them. So that's, that's one thing I want to just keep people aware of is there's a lot of work happening there. And as those reports come out in terms of what we're learning and what they're doing to improve, I want to get that information out to you guys as well. There will be a work session in about two and two and a half weeks where the department will do a full sort of report out of all the things that they're working on right now and all of the areas that they're improving and all the policies that they're looking at. So that's, that's something that I would encourage you guys to listen to, and I'll make sure once that data set that I've shared with all of you. The other issue that I wanted to talk about was as we are headed towards the the sales tax is certainly top of mind for, I think, a lot, lot of folks. And we're really hoping to get more and more feedback from community councils from the general public about where they stand on it, how they feel about it. It looks like that the Assembly is starting to coalesce around one of the proposals. And so we'll get more information on that coming soon. But over the next, over the next month, one month or so, we hope to get to one proposal and to see if it gets through the Assembly. And then, of course, goes out to the public. I'll just say, you know, from my perspective, it's been a really challenging process. And I think that, and I'm really been thankful for all the people that have sent in emails and called and talked to us about what they think about it and would love to hear your thoughts about it as well. Because it's a big, big deal. It's a big change for our city, and I think we need to make sure that we're doing it right. So just, I would encourage all of you to really share with us how you feel about it, what your ideas are and what your concerns are. And then the last thing I just wanted to give people a heads up is that as we move into, to thinking about the the capital improvement plan, and as we think about the next cycle of that, there is, there is a meeting tomorrow to begin to look at that process and to look at that criteria. And so would encourage folks, if you can't attend, to listen in or to listen to the recording afterwards. That is at 2:15 in Conference Room 155, and that's where we'll be reviewing and talking about the 2026 Capital Improvement Program and really looking at whether there should be changes in that, in that program and the criteria to use for that. That's probably a good start, but we're happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Hey, does anybody have any questions for Cameron? I guess I have one with regard to what the last item that you just brought up, looking to the Assembly is having a work session tomorrow to discuss potential changes. So can you give us some kind of a feel for what, what folks are considering that would be changed?
Yeah, I think that.
How it's been? Or how it is now?
I think there's been, as I think of, some of you have been watching, there's been certainly a lot of energy put around how we, how we choose capital projects and and infrastructure and how that relates to some of our housing challenges. And so I think there's a, there's a discussion about how that program can help to encourage increased density, how it can be more in line with some of the sort of housing priorities that the Assembly and the administration has. The mayor has set a pretty audacious goal in terms of building more housing. And so the, one of the topics that will be discussed tomorrow is, is whether the criteria that is being used can help to encourage increased density of housing. And so that among a variety of other things, that the rubric or the criteria that's used in that has not changed in quite some time. So I think there's also a desire to look at the overall program and to see if there's areas that can be improved.
Okay, well, that, that, that would be quite a difference. That would be quite a change. Because I can't speak for any other councils, but certainly Ternigan Community Council, when we do our CIP list, we've had projects on there for years. And then they slowly move up the ladder, like road improvement projects and park improvement projects and, you know, trail projects. And so to have a complete shift of it would be. I don't, I don't know what word to use. It doesn't seem like the community council's role is to identify capital projects through this typical ranking list for private development. I mean, you know, that's not our purview. It's nothing we would weigh in on. And so not sure how that would be integrated, but I see other people have questions. So.
Yeah. And let me just be clear about what I'm saying. The, I think that particular part of it is, is our ideas that are being brought forward. I was at the Bernard Community Council last night, and it's the same thing. The councils have had projects for years in this queue. And, and it's been, it's been a long wait to get some of these things done. That, I think, from my perspective, and I think the majority of the Assembly are the priorities. And so I think that, that, that the process of trying to sort of look at this and and make adjustments to the criteria has to be balanced with, with the priority projects that have been in the queue for a long time. So I will be honest, I don't anticipate there being significant changes to it. But I, but I think it's a, it's a fair, you know, opportunity for members to come forward and to share ideas about what could change. So.
Okay, thank you. So Jonathan Galen, welcome.
All right, thank you, Kathy. Hi, Cameron. So I have read briefly all the different incognations of the tax proposals, as arcane as it may be. Am I to understand that the 3% proposed tax, would that only go towards capital projects? Would there be any other use of those taxes generally? For example, frankly, to supplement some of the momentous problems we have with the total lack of street maintenance that we are seeing? It's become atrocious beyond belief. Almost every road I drive on in South Central, especially Anchorage, the municipality. I don't know if you've driven down 36th Street lately Avenue, whatever. People are having to spend money on tires and rims. I see no one fixing these problems. They only get worse throughout the whole municipality. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that. So the original proposal for the sales tax was to, the 2% of it would be to, would be used to reduce property tax. And then 1% of it would go to capital projects that were selected by the citizens of Anchorage, and there would be a number of these capital projects and everything from improved sports centers to children's museums, those kinds of things. It came from a model from Oklahoma City. That was the original proposal, was that it was 2% to reduce property tax and 1% for these capital projects. Since then, there has been a number of other proposals of how that tax might be used that range from social services to infrastructure to housing and a variety of things. And so the process we're in now is, is trying to work through these different iterations of it and figure out what that final iteration would be. So I can't tell you what that final iteration will be and what it'll look like. And, and there certainly, to my knowledge, there is not one specifically that addresses the kind of infrastructure problems that you're talking about, which I completely agree with and should be a priority for us. And so that right now, the, the sales tax is, is centered around reducing property taxes and potentially beyond the capital projects, doing things like helping with housing issues and issues around other kinds of like social service kinds of things.
Right, thank you. You know, the last, the only comment I'd have, Cameron, is if you, if it costs you a new tire and a new room to rim to get to some type of housing that's being used, built with these funds, it, it makes no sense. If people come to Anchorage from out of town for project, you know, the Anchorage conventions, we have enough issues now with the road system, and I drive frequently for business itself. We, it doesn't matter if we can't get to housing projects, which will be segregated by more construction. And so I think we would love to see you take a look at that. I personally don't care if my taxes for my homeowner's taxes drop. I'd rather spend, should there be an increase of sales tax on projects that have a meaningful effect on our infrastructure, which is disintegrating for years, decades? Thank you for your answer.
Thanks.
Okay, let's see, Steve Montus, you have your hand up.
Yeah, Cameron, you may have already addressed this, but you were talking about APD. There's a review. And I assume that was from outside, and is that currently happening? Or is it finished?
There's, there were two, two reviews. One was specifically on the shooting of the 16-year-old girl. That was finished. That was an internal review that, that we did not see the majority of that review, but we were given a public-facing sort of recommendations based on that. So it's, so, and I can share that with you. It was about 16 different recommendations came from that one. But it was only about that particular case. So it was recommendations for policy shifting or changing based on that. The second review, which is a larger RFP, which would be a comprehensive look at the police department, their policies, their, their, their training, their relationship with the community. That would be a larger project that would take approximately six months, and there would be community involvement and input in that. The result of that will be a public report that will come out to share what they've learned about the Anchorage Police Department and what areas they're recommending to be improved and changed.
And then also the work session that was, you were talking about, is that with community involvement or would they be allowed to be there?
Work session related to public safety? Yes. So that's, that one, we, and I'm planning it now, but, but I'm really actually looking forward to it because our new police chief, Sean Case, I think he's doing a lot of really important things within the department. The department has, I think, beyond it being a great department, there's all kinds of things that I think he's found that can improve. And so he's, he's going to come out and kind of give a comprehensive look at like, here's what's going on, here's what we're doing, here are the changes that are being made. And once that's scheduled, that will be public and people will, will be able to attend that and hear that. There probably won't be a lot of opportunity for public input at that point. It's mainly just a report out. But, but I will say that as a part of this new RFP, there will be a number of public gatherings and public discussions where we'll have surveys, we'll have public forums where people can come forward and actually share their experiences and thoughts around engaging with our police.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions for Cameron? Okay, if not, thank you so much, Cameron. I really appreciate you coming to our meeting this evening.
Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it. And if you have any other questions, please feel free to email me or call me. Thanks.
Okay, great. And I see that, where did I just see that? Matt. Looks like you would like to go ahead and follow Cameron this evening on our agenda. So does anybody have any problem with moving our legislative report up to where we're at on the agenda right now? Okay, if not, Matt, you have the floor. Welcome.
Thanks. It's good to, good to be here this evening and, and good to check in. We're busy, busy start here in Juneau. I'd say the big stuff that got a lot of attention just recently is the there's been a kind of a small negotiating group going on with two from the Senate Majority, two from the House Majority, two from the Senate Minority, and two from the House Minority, meeting with representatives of the Governor's Office to see if they can come up with any kind of a consensus education bill that both addresses funding and potentially some policy concerns. So that's, that's been, that's been going on for the last, last few days. They started on Friday and, and those discussions are continuing. No report out yet, no results, but I know there's been lots of community interest in, in education issues. And I think one of the things that's real apparent is if, I think the Anchorage Assembly had sent in a a resolution for the legislature to consider that suggested we needed an increase in the base student allocation of about $1,900. And if we can fund that, the likelihood is that'll have a pretty significant impact on how much is available to pay permanent fund dividends. So that's, that's certainly going to be part of the discussion. We're hearing a variety of different pieces of legislation in the committees. I won't go into lots of details on that, but just let you know that we're, we're getting, getting, hearing from folks, having a lot of folks visit with different groups that are in Juneau their first few weeks of session and we're working hard and here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Matt? Let's see. And thank you for your legislative report that got sent out with our announcement, meeting notice. So does anybody have anything for Matt? Catherine? Yes, Karen, go ahead.
Thanks so much. Senator Kleeman, I was wondering about the Senate and House bills that were against protesting and wondered if there, if you had anything on that?
The, these are the ones about demonstrations that the governor submitted?
Yes, sir.
Those, those pieces of legislation he introduced in the last session last year, I think, I think we had one hearing on the bill in the Senate Judiciary Committee, and the bill didn't move out of committee last year. And we haven't scheduled it for a hearing yet this year, and so far, the Governor's Office hasn't requested a hearing. I actually, actually, I think there's another committee that would hear it before the Judiciary Committee that I'd chair, but that bill didn't go anywhere last year. And so I'm, I'm not sure there's a lot of interest in it this year.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Karen. Anybody else have any questions for Matt? I'm sure there's lots of stuff going on, but yeah, focus is on education, I would, I would assume. Do you have any thoughts about potentially the, you know, Department of Education at the federal level being pretty much dismantled? And how that may trickle down to somebody's classroom?
You know, one of the questions I have, and so this isn't an answer as to the Federal Department of Education, I, my understanding is that it was created by an act of Congress. So I have questions about whether by executive action, you can remove a department like that. That raises the question about whether there would be support for doing it in the House and the Senate. And those are, again, more questions. Both with education funding and other federal funding, there, there is an awareness that if some of the funding, funding cuts that have been talked about, but it's unclear whether it'll go anywhere if some of the funding cuts do take place, the impact on Alaska in education and other, other parts of our state could be fairly dramatic.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, in theory, that's something that the legislature at the state level would then have to deal with. I think the phrase that I've been hearing is they want to move that down to the state level, like, you know, nothing federal, just every state deal with education independently of any kind of federal assistance or guidance or involvement.
Well, and I think part of the challenge on that as well is that even if there's no federal funding, there's, there are federal standards on certain areas that we'd have to comply with as we deliver education on a state level. But the concerns you raise are significant concerns, and there's very much an awareness here in Juneau.
Yeah, okay, as if you didn't have enough to worry about. Okay, does anybody else have anything for our Senator? Okay, if not, then thank you very much, Matt, and thanks for the report that got sent out. So.
Yep. Well, have a great evening and enjoy. Happy Valentine's to everyone about eight days from now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, let's see, where were we at on the agenda? Oh, let's see, so nobody had any announcements. And so hey. Yes.
It's Carolyn. I'm here.
Oh, my goodness. Hello, Carolyn.
Hello.
Join us.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I am, I appreciate the opportunity. I'm super thrilled to be here. I'll, I'll try to keep my report as brief as Matt's, but I do have a little bit more I'd like to expand on, and mostly it's because I'm new and I just want to give you an update as far as like all the things that are happening in our office to serve you all. So firstly, I'm part of the House Bipartisan Majority Coalition. So it's largely Democrat, Democrat. We have independents and Republicans as a part of our caucus. And because we're in the majority, I have the honor of being co-chair of Labor and Commerce. I am the co-chair of that committee with Representative Fields, Zach Fields, our neighbor to the north and east of us. And I'm also sitting on the House. And I'm also sitting on the House Resources Committee, Military and Veterans Affairs Committee, and the Community and Regional Affairs Committee. So I anticipate being incredibly busy this session, which is great. And Matt covered, or Senator Kleiman covered the education negotiation, so I won't spend time on that. Want to let you know that we have three staff members in our office and I'm really happy with their professionalism and their dedication to working for you and for, for the priorities that we all care about. And their names are Tristan Walsh. He's my chief of staff. He's been in the building for about eight years now and he was chief of staff to Representative Jenny Armstrong as well. So there's great continuity for the district there. And then we have two other staff members who are brand new to the building and we're working on building up our bench and trying to develop local talent to build institutional knowledge like what Tristan has. So that they can continue to serve Alaskans in this role should they stay, choose to stick with it. So that feels really good. They're fitting in super, super well. Their names are Jamie Bagley and J.J. Jackson. The Anchorage Caucus, we had our first meeting tonight and so that was really great. We're talking about dates that we're going to have the, the Anchorage Town Hall. We have not finalized a date yet, but it's something that we are trying to zero in on. It's looking like it's probably going to happen in March. So we will make sure that you, you all are updated and know where to go, when to go. And just to, to share whatever it is that you want us to be aware of and to take back to Juneau with us on your behalf. I have a couple of bills that I'm working on. Ones related to basically trying to help support communities with a resiliency with a changing climate. So that's actively being worked on right now. And I, I believe the, this bill is going to be filed next week, but it is basically a companion bill to if a bill that Senator Gray Jackson, L.B. Gray Jackson filed on the Senate side. And that is a bill basically marking and acknowledging in perpetuity that March is Women's History Month. So I'm looking forward to working with Senator Gray Jackson on that. Otherwise, I've been very, very busy with all of the things, just trying to understand the landscape under which I'm maneuvering and it's going very, very well. Really enjoying it. We've had a bunch of constituents come in as well as they've been coming to the Capitol for advocacy on certain projects that they, they care about. So really enjoyed everybody coming in to stop in and say hello. We distributed our first newsletter last Sunday. And so we're working on building our list. And so if you did not receive it, please let me know. I'll put my contact information in the chat and I'll, and I'll try to, it's hard on my phone for me, but I'll try to to link into the chat as well so that you can sign up for the newsletter on, on your own if you so choose to. And then I have one more announcement and then a question for the group. And the announcement is on Saturday, February fifteenth, I'll be having our first constituent coffee meetup, meet and greet at Chugatch Mountain Roaster, Chugatch Mountain Roasters on the fifteenth at eleven AM until noon. And Chugatch Mountain Roasters is on Spinard Road. And then the question that I have for the group is, do you want me to also submit a written report in advance? Because if so, I'm happy to do that. I just want to make sure that I'm, whatever way it is that is best for me to communicate with you, that you just let me know and I'm happy to accommodate. That is all I have, happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you so much, Carolyn. So any thoughts on, we typically have gotten written reports that we send out, you know, if we get them in time, send out with our meeting agenda so that even those who may not zoom in or attend a meeting in person on a monthly basis, then, you know, then they may be on our email list. I, I don't even know how many people we have on our email list, but I know it's quite a few. It's been, you know, building over time. So that would be the, that would be the pro of not only providing, you know, anything verbal at our monthly meetings, but also sending out a newsletter to the TCC email list as well as, you know, your other, other areas, other council representation so that people can get information from you without necessarily attending a council meeting. But, you know, does anybody else have any thoughts on that? So you can just take that as a, a word of wisdom that you may or may not want to, want to put into consideration, but that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Kathy, Jonathan had his hand up and I have a question. A question, can you repeat the time of the constituent coffee?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's going to be on February fifteenth. It's a Saturday from eleven AM to noon. Okay. At, at Chugatch Mountain Roasters.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Jonathan.
Okay, thank you. Karen, thank you, Carolyn, I'm sorry, thank you. I would opt to like to see notes before meetings sent out. We can't all attend every meeting. But I did have secondarily somewhat of a thorny question for you. Being someone that is getting started with what you're doing now. If you had choice number one, priority two and three, what would they be for the state of Alaska within your purview to influence? Number one, the most important issue facing Alaska? The legislature would be involved in? Number two and number three?
I think that's a great question and these are my priorities because and, and I'd like to explain a little bit why number one for me is number one. And number one for me, and it's not an overnight fix and it's going to take a lot of work of everybody in the Capitol, all sixty of us, but then also the governor. But we have to fix our structural deficit. We have to fix our, our financial situation. So first and foremost, that is number one for me. And the, the reason why is because all of these other issues that are incredibly important to our state and that I hear on a daily basis in my email and with talking to constituents is that people want to be able to fund public education. And people want to be able to fund a reformed defined benefit plan for public workers. And it's at this point with, with this year's fiscal situation, there is not a lot of room for, yeah, there's just not a lot of room to be able to pay for all of these things, including, you know, a capital budget. So how are we going to be investing in ourselves through our children and through our schools and through our public employees who are providing services to the private sector? As well as to, you know, folks who are, who receive a variety of programs and services, whether it's public assistance or, you know, administering retirement benefits. Like there's, there's, there's a lot that, there's a lot of need. And when it comes to being able to provide certain public services. And right now it's, it's rather challenging giving the revenue forecast that we have and the realities of our fiscal constraints. So that's kind of, that's kind of my three, like right there, if, if that's helpful.
So the, so if I hear you correctly, number one is, is dealing with the deficit, correct? What's number two and number three?
Sure.
Out of fifty?
Sure, number two, absolutely funding public education. Our public education system has been starved and suffocated for the last, you know, since at least two thousand seventeen. And it's like, we are hearing it loud and clear. And even my colleagues who are from more conservative parts of the state, like they are hearing a lot from their constituents as well as far as the, the budget realities that they are hearing about in their home districts. So that's number two. And number three is restoring or reforming and getting us back to a modest, one that we can afford defined benefit plan for public employees, for all public employees. I don't, I don't know if we'll be able to do that in the first fell swoop because of those budget constraints, but we really need to be doing something to make sure that we're not only attracting but retaining our public workforce. And that's teachers, it's first responders, it's people who are, you know, working on permits for what's for all the activity that's happening on the North Slope. We are hearing just, there's a very severe lag in state resources. And we need to be working to shore up those resources so that we can provide for Alaskans.
Thank you very much for answering a very difficult priority.
Oh, yeah, you're, you're very welcome. Yeah, thank you for the question.
Yeah, thanks Jonathan, good question. Uh, anybody else, do you have anything for Carolyn? I don't, uh, yeah, Brandon, go ahead.
Hey, thank you for, for this opportunity. Ms. Hall, do you think there is any common ground that you guys can find with the governor for an education bill? And, and if not, do you think you guys will be able to put together a super majority to override any vetoes? Thank you.
That, that is such an excellent question and I wish I had a crystal ball. I know from what I understand, there are very sincere, good faith efforts taking place on all sides. And from what I understand, at least from the first day of negotiations, things were pretty, like things were hashing out like pretty well. But that was more of the easy stuff than the more difficult stuff. So there's a lot yet to be seen. I'm hopeful. I really hope that some kind of compromise can come together. I'm not a part of those negotiations. I'm not a part of leadership, so there's a lot that I don't know as far as, you know, and, you know, what's kind of of the conversations that are taking place and how well things are going after a few days of negotiations at this point. But I am hopeful and so long as we're all able to find that sweet spot of a compromise where the governor is, you know, getting a couple of policy wins, we're getting policy wins, especially when it comes to the funding. You know, that's what everybody's working towards. When it comes to the possibility of a veto override, I think the failure of the last veto override with SP one forty made quite an impact. And it made quite an impact as far as the makeup of the current legislature. And so depending on how things kind of shake down, maybe there's a chance, but I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm new to, relatively new to politics, so I'm like, I'm not, I don't have a magic crystal ball, I wish I did. So I don't know if that helps your answer, but it's, it's what I know at this point. Okay, thank you for the question.
Yeah. Okay, thank, thank you, thank you very much, both of you. And Tracy, I see your hand up and that's probably going to be the last, last one we, uh, because we need to move on to other agenda items. But Tracy, please.
Sure, uh, super short, thanks Carolyn for being here and for working on this issue. Do you know if there's going to be more opportunities for public testimony? And this might be a question for Matt, if you're still on with the Senate. I know the House had opportunity for public testimony, but I didn't know if there was any more of that and kind of next steps for us to get more involved as citizens.
Yeah, thank you so much for that question, Tracy. And I believe you've emailed me twice now, I think, right? But I've only returned one of your emails, so I still have it. I think I have even have it in my drafts in my inbox. So I will be returning your email. At this point, HB sixty-nine, the bill that is solely tackling the funding increase to the base student allocation that Representative Hemsud is carrying. At this point, I don't believe it is scheduled for another hearing. But I wouldn't be, I don't know, we'll see just kind of like what shapes up with the, the negotiations with the governor and then we'll be able to have more information as far as opportunities to testify. But keep emailing, I mean, that's definitely helpful. As, yeah, as you're able, but when it comes to like verbal, like call in testimony, it's yet to be seen, but I'm sure depending on, again, how those negotiations shape up, there will be more time for public testimony. And I'll make sure that that information is included in the newsletter and also our office is on Instagram. That's the only social media platform that we're using, at least at this point. So we'll make sure that we have updates there for you too.
And, and just on that one question, part of the agreement in terms of having the negotiations is that the education committees are holding off on hearing the cellless negotiations. And so I wouldn't anticipate education hearings until we find out what happens with the negotiations. And it's currently only being heard in the House, so there's no Senate hearings on the top, on the issue at this point.
Thank you, Matt.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much, take care down in Juneau. And when you're back in Anchorage and have a constituent gathering, we'll hope to see you then.
Awesome, thanks, everybody. I'll put that information in the chat too, so that you have it. Thank you.
Okay.
Hey Kathy, I have to jump in here now because I also came to give a, give a report for Representative Galvin. And mine's going to be really quick, I promise.
That's okay, go ahead.
Okay, Senator Kleiman and Representative Hall covered almost everything. So I'm just going to let everyone know, we just touch a little bit of your community council, so you don't always see our office here. But we wanted to let you know what Representative Galvin is up to. And she sits on the Finance Committee. And so right now we are in the subcommittee process, which is where we break the budget out into the different divisions and departments and then we do deep dives on them. So the representative is right now chairing the Finance Education Subcommittee. And we're really working on that budget and getting into it and seeing what they need. And the Finance Commerce Community and Economic Development Subcommittee and the University of Alaska Subcommittee. So again, we just do a deep dive on the budget. We are part of, not part of, but the committee is comprised of the, either the special committee, committee in terms of the Energy Committee or the Education Standing Committee or with the University of Alaska, it's Committee of the Whole, meaning the whole Finance Committee is the University of Alaska Subcommittee. And so it takes only about a month to do these committee hearings. And then at the end of the four or five weeks, we give a recommendation to the full Finance Committee and that helps build the state's operating budget. So we are looking at transmitting recommendations to the full Finance Committee in the first week of March. At this point, our legislative priorities are fleshed out, but we haven't been able to give them our full attention. And we will be working on that more in the next couple of weeks. But from Representative Galvin's office, obviously a lot of it comes around priorities in education and mental health and some other issues that are important to us. Are, we also have a newsletter. It's very active, so if you want to be part of our newsletter, I would, you can email the office and we'll get you on the email list. We're, we also have a new staff, I'm the senior staff in the office, there's three new staff. And luckily, they all have great social media skills. So we are really upping our social media presence and working at getting on almost all platforms. So you can look for us there. And I'm happy to take any questions, but that's all I got for you.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Does anybody have any questions? Well, if not, please, please tell Representative Galvin we said hi from Turnigan Community Council.
I will do that, thank you very much.
Yeah, and thank you so much for attending our meeting this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, am I missing anybody else from Juneau contingency? Okay, if not, we'll go back to our agenda that was sent out, that now has been modified. So did anybody have anything under what's new in Turnigan? That's just a brief opportunity to share anything that may be happening in our neck of the woods that anybody wants to share. If not, we will move on to the Executive Board Report. Let's see. Okay, well, our next board meeting, we never give a date because it fluctuates on when we have, have a chance to meet and prep for our monthly meetings, so let's, please give me, or any board member, contact any board member if you want to know when we meet. And we'll let you know, we've been primarily doing that via Zoom for now. Our next general membership meeting is March sixth, so mark your calendars. And the next thing will be, let's see, I haven't been keeping track here of what I should be doing. Is the FCC delegate report, and I am the delegate for the council. So we met on January 15, and just a quick summary is that we. Discussed council work product and document retention policy, and we're going to be. Continuing that dialogue into our February meeting. They only have so much capacity with regard to like, you know, Zoom meeting, archiving Zoom meetings, they keep. They keep those for three months, and then they do delete them. And so, which is something we learned the hard way back when this first started because. Nobody really realized that, and they were, they were. Getting rid of those before there was any way to permanently. You know, go ahead and archive in some other way. So. So but Chris Havich, our secretary, he is. Uploading our meeting recordings to YouTube. So that's a good way for them to be archived outside of any kind of constraints that the FCC. Office can provide. And like I said, we'll follow up that discussion in our next delegate meeting. We were told that the CIP list will. But we haven't received, we didn't receive it in January, and now the latest is it looks like the Assembly may be. Doing some modifying, so I don't know what that does to the schedule. We were told that councils will get three months. To review them and rank them and submit them. But now we'll just kind of wait and see what happens with that. Like I said, we haven't received our and and if you've noticed, usually they come out like in March, and then the deadline is in. In May or June. And this this effort now is to do it much earlier in the year so that. Planning and budgeting and so forth can be better utilized. Let's see, so. The FCC is launching a new website sometime this month. No delegates have seen what it'll look like yet, so we're anxious just to see what that may entail and. And the mayor's office representative was at the meeting, and she said the mayor, they are committed to attend one to two meetings. Per year, per council, and. And then if there's anything outside of that where we definitely want the mayor at our meeting for this reason, you know, certainly we can ask for that as well. And then we also were given a presentation. On 2025, sorry, 2020, yeah, 2025, I got that right. Property assessments, and that was very informative to see how they are determined every year. And the February 12 is the last day to appeal. So everybody probably got their green. Card in the mail if you own property. And if you don't feel like the the dollars, the dollar amount on your assessment is. Something that you feel like is appropriate, you can have till February 12 to file an appeal with that office. So that's about all I have from delegate meeting reporting. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, we will move on.
Kathy?
Yes. Oh, sorry, John.
That's okay.
Sorry.
You mentioned that the mayor said she would potentially attend up to one or two meetings per year for each individual community council?
No, a mayor's representative will.
Okay, so okay.
Somebody from their office.
Okay, because I was going to ask whether we would want to bring back a regular mayor's report, but that seems to answer that question.
Yeah. Now, that doesn't mean that that Merrill France may not show up at any given council meeting, but. No, it was mainly pertaining to staff.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Now, if I heard it right and my notes are right, that that's what we were told. But it looks like we're probably going to have somebody from the mayor's office at. Most, if not all FCC delegate meetings, which are on the third Thursdays of each month, and anybody's welcome to. You know, attend those. We are meeting in person over at the conference room on Fireweed Lane. So, you know, that's good, and that's kind of how things can get filtered down to each council is if they. If they report at the delegate level. Okay, so let's see. So the next item on the agenda to just have a general discussion is now would be the time to. Consider. If we want to. Work with other West Anchorage community councils and organize a. West Anchorage Candidates Forum for this April 1 spring election where Assembly members and School Board. Members are on the ballot. And I did reach out to Spinnard Community Council. They met last night. I wasn't able to attend the meeting in person, but. They did bring it up last night, and I got a letter. I mean, an email from Lindsay Hydoo, and she said that. It was brought up at their meeting, but because of the redistricting, the latest redistricting, the Spinnard. Community Council boundaries are actually represented by west. Parts of them, either west, north, and midtown Assembly districts. And so there's. And I have gone online to look how many, how many people have filed to run for those two seats. And then if you take into account not just our west district council or west district that Turnigan is completely in. But then there's that I'm aware of, I'm pretty sure that's the case. But then other West Anchorage councils, including Spinnard as north and midtown. And so just wanted to get a feel. So that that definitely makes it a bigger, more complicated. Effort, but we certainly have had good success in organizing. In the past, but so this is just, I want to get a feel for what you guys think maybe we we would like to do. If anything, and you know, options could range from just having inviting candidates to. It would have to be our March meeting since elections are April 1, and just have a little Q and A session with them if we don't feel like we've. Got the bandwidth to organize something bigger than that. Or if we want to encourage. The other West Anchorage councils to participate in in something that would be on a whole different scale. So open to suggestions here. Any thoughts? I don't see any hands raised. Does that mean?
Kathy?
Yes.
This is Karen. I just wanted to note that. When we had it. Last year, was it just last year?
It was.
It was just the one council, or excuse me, Assembly seat, or was it more than, oh, it was the mayor's race as well. That's right.
Yes, there wasn't all Assembly members. It was it was School Board and Mayor's, and we chose not to. Do School Board candidates last year. Typically, we do include them just for kind of some. You know, trying to keep, keep it manageable. For the timeframe that we had.
Kathy?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Just a quick question. I mean, I didn't participate in any of the previous debates, but. Do you feel like the way we had the system set up the last couple of years that it was successful? And if if it was, is there a real need to change things?
Well, we've been doing this for quite a few years, actually. I mean, I I can't remember when our first one was, but we've been doing, and they've always been successful. Even on some of the worst, snowiest nights where you'd think not one person would want to get out and attend, and they did. And so. So in that respect, we have a good track record.
Good.
When we first started doing this, we didn't hold as, there weren't as many different groups doing the same thing. So, you know, we, I think that's probably why we had good attendance and so forth, but now. Seems like more or groups and organizations. Have some kind of their version of candidates forum as well. So it's pretty hard to book them, you know, get a time when we can even get them to an event. But they they all have been successful to varying degrees, yes. Jonathan?
Kathy, well, I I would opt for. A forum, but I would opt for Zoom. And for the Turnigan Community Council, however. I have I have another comment, but before I have a question for you, what specifically, when would, if it was Zoom? When would you schedule it? Because it obviously you couldn't have a community council. Meeting at, you know, the same, at the same juncture.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to have a formal candidates forum during a regular. Meeting because I mean, you know, different, different West Anchorage councils meet at different times. Spinnard met last night, North Star, I think, meets next Monday. You know, etc. So. And during COVID, we did hold, we did hold some via Zoom. And that was, you know, tricky, but we pulled it off. People with more techno technological talents than me.
And so when would you anticipate the date? Obviously, it has to be sent out if if we decide we'd like a separate meeting. Turnigan Community Council specifically, so that candidates need to schedule it.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's why it's kind of very time sensitive. That we would, if we and other councils or us by ourselves try and do anything. Then we would need to make a decision pretty quickly because. They do book up with other people wanting their time as well, and we, if we did it. In person, we've always held it at the Spinnard Recreation Center, so we'd have to get that booked and etc. So Pat, you've got your hand raised.
I was just thinking that. I was just thinking that maybe we, how, I didn't look at the list to see how many candidates we have for. Our community council area or assembly area. And if we maybe just have three minutes at our community council meeting.
I don't know how you're going to get them to elaborate for three minutes or less.
Well, actually, we do limit them to that when we have the regular, the other would be to to schedule. To, as Jonathan says, schedule a, if we do it by Zoom, to schedule a particular time and have the School Board and the Assembly candidates. Just to answer our questions, to give their presentation and answer our questions on Zoom, or. I I would prefer a live audience thing that we could all go to. I can get around now so I could go.
Yeah, Pat, I'm not sure the time constraints would would be able to allow that. It would have to be started. Organized immediately. So that's why I like to Zoom, a dedicated Zoom meeting. At a specific date, invite them, see who shows up, and you could even invite. Kathy, the, you know, the other council members to monitor or the other community council members to monitor. And. Maybe if they wanted to ask questions, they could appoint one individual. And and have a time limit, three minutes, whatever. That would be sort of the forum that I would take a look at, and I don't know how many people are running. And what is the actual date of the next election?
April 1. It's April 1, so.
Well, that's very, very soon, so.
That's why, that's why we're bringing it up now.
The candidates list just just closed. So.
Well, that's my two cents worth. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thanks, Jonathan, for your input. Yeah, that it's, we could make it as simple or as complicated as we want if we want to try and just do something on our own. And invite the School Board members. And then also just those running for what currently is Cameron's Cameron. Cameron's. Seat Perez Verde is is open, and I, he is running again, and so I don't know who else may have filed to.
He has, he has filed, and I'm trying to remember. I should have seen.
So that would keep it very manageable, and it would just be Turnigan. Like I said, Spinnard would not want to partake in any kind of. Event like that with us unless we broadened it out to those in. Other Assembly seats that are within the Spinnard Community Council area, or, you know, within the what they're assigned to, north and midtown. And then and then, you know, then that just starts getting, you know, much more complicated, but could be a very good event. And as we all know, when we see how Assembly members vote on any given item that goes before them. All all 12 of them vote, you know, not just the ones in our area for something that may be in our area, all of them vote. So there's, that's the advantage of also. Including others, even though we wouldn't vote for them on our ballot. We certainly see them in action. When they, when they vote on things, take positions on things. So it's pro and con, and we don't have a lot of, a lot more time because we're running kind of way behind, but.
I'm not going to move, but I'm going to suggest that. Maybe as a group of us get together and discuss with you what we might do.
Like form a little committee of some sort?
Yes.
That's a great idea. Would you like to be?
And do it quickly.
So you would serve on that committee?
Uh, yes, if I can do it by phone or.
Okay, anybody else want to serve on that committee? Kathleen. And Kathleen did a great job on. On taking the lead on the event last year. She was a great moderator. Okay, anybody else? Karen, did you, I know you're clapping, but are you also raising your clapping hand?
Sure.
Okay, and Jonathan, I see you're clapping. Do you want to raise your clapping hand? Be on a committee?
I would be on the committee if it was one meeting and. It's scheduled very soon, depending on my schedule.
Okay, so this wouldn't be organizing the event. This would, this would, this, because it'll take more than one meeting to organize it. But if we're just putting a committee together to discuss it further, you want to be on it. Okay? Okay. Well, let's not, let's do that via email outside of this, figuring out a date when we want to get together. How about that? Okay, all right, sounds good. Okay, thank you, everybody, for your input. I appreciate it. Oh, who else had their hand? Oh, Jean, 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 hi.
Hi, I just want to say I think that the candidate forums are really helpful, really, really informative. I love them. Every time I've gone, I've learned so much and even. Changed who I was going to vote for. So as for Zoom, if it is Zoom, I would like to request that it be not in the daytime for, because people that work can't attend. And if it's not Zoom, if it's Bernard Rec Center or somewhere, I would certainly help with that.
Wow, excellent.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, let's go ahead and and move on, and. Since we're changing the order of the day, I mean, there's a, there's a lot more items. Under Executive Board Report that, you know, we could go through really, really quickly. Or we could go ahead and move down to Eric, are you with us? Eric Peterson?
Yes, hello.
Oh, there you are. There you are. So what's the wish of the body? Should we go ahead? And I still want to cover everything under Board Report because there are good updates, but. For the sake of our guests who are here. Maybe take the airport report and the first item under old and new business next. Since that census agenda has been, you know, juggled. Since that, since this agenda has been, you know, juggled around so much anyway, why, why not?
This is Pat, I saw that we do that.
I second.
Does anybody object to that? Okay, so we will take the airport report next. And then we'll follow up with the, um. Uh, the proposal for, uh, the German immersion school to, uh, relocate at Lake Hood. So thank you guys.
Okay, well, so I'm Eric Peterson with the Anchorage International Airport. I'll, uh, kind of go quickly through our kind of monthly updates that we do. Uh, so we have a new airport director. He started last week on Monday, uh, Dave Bronson, the former mayor of Anchorage. So I'm sure you all. Are aware of him and know him. Uh, so he, so he just started and we're happy to have him on the team. Uh, the other ones is we have kind of a new route and as well as expanded service. So Delta Airlines is going to be flying. Uh, this summer, Anchorage to Los Angeles, uh, which gives kind of more, you know, more airlines, more routes, uh, in order to go to Los Angeles. Excited for that. Uh, Delta is also going to extend its Anchorage Atlanta, Atlanta route. Normally it's summer only, but they're gonna do it, uh, basically starting in May and going all the way through January of next year. So it'll. Go through the holiday season. So if you go home for the holidays and kind of southeast. Kind of lower forty eights, you're gonna have more, more direct flight this year. Um. I'd also say, I know recently and there was a lot of public comments online. I don't know if. Probably some of them were from Turnigan because you guys are kind of the closest to the noise there. Uh, but about a week, two weeks ago, we had a squadron of F twenty twos, emergency land at the airport. Uh, there was a lot of. Uh, comments about the noise, which we apologize for. Uh, F twenty twos are incredibly loud aircrafts. Uh, and normally they don't come to our airport, but they had to emergency land here, uh, because the J bear runway was closed. So we apologize for the noise. Uh, but we are J bears, you know, that Alendorf runways, uh, kind of emergency backup airport. So we're always excited, at least for their safety. Uh, and then the, the last one is, uh, Pizza Hut just opened. So, uh, Pizza Hut is. Our newest tenant at the airport. So if you're going through the terminal, it's, it's down on C, kind of near the Alaska Airlines gates. Uh, but if you want to grab a pizza before your flight, there's now a Pizza Hut open behind security. Um, other than that, I'm open for questions. I, I know John had sent in a list of kind of questions about various development at the airport. I'm here to answer any questions specifically. I could just kind of overview, uh, and I will let you know, I'm putting together again, we always like to do a. Summer construction series update where we have, you know, professionally made maps of all of our construction for the summer. Uh, we are putting those together and we plan to, uh, either do them next month or the month after that with all of the community councils. So I'll have nice, high resolution maps about construction activities at the airport for you, but I can answer right now.
So Eric, thank you so much for responding. It might be helpful for you to just quickly go through that list. Because we did prepare a list of asking for updates that are projects specifically of interest to, uh. Turn again, you did a great job. So if you could just run through that real quick, I think it answers a lot of people's questions.
Yeah, and I, I have your list right here, so I can kind of do it to the side. Okay, and then, um, well, let me first go to. Um, so the first kind of question was about that eight, the new ATC tower as well as the relocation to, uh, Echo Parking. So, um, let me see if I can. May I share my screen?
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Okay, so this one, okay. Okay, um, I have a couple of different maps, but I'll just show you generally on Google Maps right here. So. Zoom out a little bit. So here's Turnigan, here's the airport. Uh, let me turn on this layer terrain there. Oh, not that one. Yes, perfect. Alright, so the new ATC tower, if, if people don't know, is going to go right here. So it's kind of, it's gonna go right along the curve of Postmark Drive. Uh, as you can see from this map, there is currently planes parked all around here. These are all going to be relocated over to what we call Echo Parking. Uh, but just want to let you know, this is where the ATC tower is going. So these planes are going to be relocated. Let's zoom out, go slowly over. They're going to go up here. So this is currently Echo Parking. Right here. And this is parking for general aviation planes. So kind of smaller like Cessnas and that kind of stuff. Uh, so no, nothing too large, but this parking lot is going to be expanded this way. Kind of north, northwest and Lake Hood Drive is going to be rerouted up north and over. And let's see, I think, try to find the map for it. Oh, yes, right here. Can I zoom it? So literally the ATCT means air traffic control tower. Uh, this is gonna be their replacement parking. So it's an expansion of Echo Parking right here. This is how the road is going to be routed around it. Uh, and then for this one.
Eric, excuse me, can you, can you send that map that you're, that you're showing? Cause I've never seen this map.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, so this one is, uh, so what is it? Cause, uh. We are going to advertise for our contractor, May of twenty twenty five. That just means we're gonna select a contractor to actually do the project. Uh, and we are hoping that they could start like kind of late summer twenty twenty five. But I will say that's hopeful, might not happen. They're only gonna construct in the summer period anyway, so maybe it won't start this summer. Uh, but we're hoping at least bare minimum it will start next summer. So this might be a twenty twenty six project, or it might start later in twenty twenty five. We'll know in a couple of months. Whether or not we'll actually get it done this summer. Okay.
And you're referring to specifically the Charlie Parking relocation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. Uh, with regards to the ATC Tower, although, you know, so the, the ATC Tower, the new one is an FAA project. So, uh, I, I, I actually went around the airport trying to see if anybody had information, but, uh, mostly we just. We hear about movement with the ATC Tower from the news. Uh, it's, we, we have leased them the land for their new tower, but it is an FAA project, so they kind of control the construction and everything. Uh, so, and we have not heard any updates other than that they have. They are also going to advertise, but they've already done all of the design at least, but they are going to advertise for contract. Uh, hopefully within the next couple of months, because they have indicated to us that they would start construction this summer. Uh, okay, and then the next question, any questions on ATC Tower or the relocation of Charlie Parking?
Yes, uh. Thank you. Some comments were sent to the Army Corps on their permit. Were there any? Considerations in the permit you finally got for wetlands protection? Um, including, um, putting, putting other wetlands into, into deep protection. I don't know deed restriction is what I think we requested, but.
I, I do not know, but I'm, I'm writing notes to follow up.
Thanks.
Yeah, I remember you asking me about that last time. Uh, Jonathan?
Right, thank you briefly. At, um. At the corner, the northern corner, that stop sign of Helio Place. There was a much discussion in the last, oh, it's, but it's been about a year and a half too, since we heard anything about it. About a significant number of. Tea hangers, new construction going in on that corner across the Helio Place. From, I think that's Echo Parking, right? Has there been? They were, they were gonna offer, you know. Contractors to bid on that. What is the disposition? Do you know? On that's this huge piece of property. There's a bunch of piles of dirt there now, and there has been.
I, I'm sorry, I don't know where the Helio Place is.
That is the north, south, small, uh. Street that T Bones Lake Shore Drive. Uh, to the, uh, west of Echo Parking. I think it's Echo Parking, right?
Yeah, so Eric, if you look at Echo Parking and then there's that little road. And then on the other side of the road is where Jonathan's talking about. And that little road is Hilo, is it Hilo Place?
Learning new things. Are you referring to this plot of land right here?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, uh, so there is currently, I, I actually did not even know this until today. Uh, there is a gentleman that has leased the land. And he has apparently been trying to build, I don't know, for years, but it hasn't gone anywhere.
Right.
We still have not heard of him doing any building this summer.
Because that's all wetlands there.
Yeah, there, the land is leased, they're making payments on it, but there, there. We have not heard of any construction activities this summer.
That will significantly increase the vehicular traffic. And noise for, uh, all intents and purposes. With little airplanes rubbing up, you know, uh, and, and it's gonna be, uh, wheel planes, of course. There's no access to, uh, to the water, uh, and I'm a huge fan of little airplanes, but. It will increase dramatically the noise, the cacophony to, uh. What's happening at the International Airport. Uh, and the increases where we've been talking about.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, I will say for now though, that. I've heard that this person who owns the land, I don't actually know if it's a man either. Uh, the person who owns this land has had this leased for years and has made no indication of building anything. So as of right now. At least for there, nothing's happening. So there will be no increased plane noise or anything at that, that location.
Yeah, and if I could jump in, yeah, first, uh, yeah, Turner and Community Council has written. Two long comment letters when it, one was proposed for, um, just internal airport maintenance. And then they turned around and leased it out for a large tea hanger development. And our comments are just exactly what Jonathan said, where if all those trees are removed. The noise from the international would just be horrendous. And then plus. Whatever's operating there will make noise. So it's a cumulative effect and, um. There are wetlands, there's drainage issues, hydrology issues that were identified. And, um, when we last met with Terry Lenseth. Uh, John and Lamar and myself, um, she mentioned that. That lease may be, um, expiring fairly soon. And that, that was a little while back, sometime last fall. And so, uh, or last one, last fall, winter. So, um. That's something that Turnigan Community Council is really, really, uh. Paying attention to and has for many years. So, uh, anything that, any, any kind of updates you can provide us. Whenever you might find out, that would be very helpful. We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Well, just a point of information, Mr. Peterson, I, I, the statistic. Uh, all that construction on Postmark Drive. Uh, across from, to the west of, uh, the US Post Office.
Yeah.
From the FedEx, the, all that empty space on the periphery of that road. To, uh. The, the North Terminal. Now, of course, there's significant construction there because. The statistic that we heard was that there will be in the next ten years, one billion with a B. One billion square feet. Of additional storage place, uh, storage capability, including, uh, which would include the, uh. You know, the cold storage, direct, uh, also to expedite. Uh, the FAA and the Department of Homeland Security. Uh, you know, direct transfer. Uh, cargo from Asia right to other airplanes to, uh, Europe. Which is a great idea. The problem is, of course, those airplanes will be. Expending tremendous amount of noise as well. Arguably doubling the decibel rate. At the International Airport or South Runway. So. We're aware of it. Um, I know the airport, I'm a fan of it. It is a, a financial engine. For Alaska and Anchorage, but within reason. You, you can't have unmitigated growth without certain, uh. You know, concessions. That's no comment I have. Thank you.
Oh. That will, and that will actually be kind of addressed on something later. Um, Sandy, did you have a question?
Um, I had a quick comment and I, I'm, I'm assuming that this comment's been made before. I'm, I'm, uh. Counting on Kathy here to have made this many times, but, but I just want to say it out loud quickly. And that is. That I hope written into all these construction projects, both federal and. Um, and state that it is stipulated that, uh, trucks. Involved with the construction projects cannot access the airport on Northern Lights Boulevard. That they, that they be required to use International Airport Road. Um, there's a long history to that. I, I don't want to waste people's time and repeat things that you've heard and are aware of. Anyway, I just wanted to make sure that was raised.
Yes, and those are specifically written into basically all the new construction, everything that's happening over the West Air Park. That, uh, any large vehicles have to take International Airport Road.
Yeah, okay, glad to hear it.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, uh, Sandy. And, and certainly, uh, former manager Campbell was very, very supportive. Of, um, of that. So, which we appreciate and we hope that the current manager Bronson is, uh, is. Equally emphatic about, about that. So.
Um, so, so kind of on that one, the, the next one was the West Cargo, uh, like Air Park, which where did I have this? Uh, no, I think it was still. No. I have a map of this. Oh, it is still on this one. This is a good map. Um, so the West Cargo Expansion. Is over on the west side of the airport and I will let you all know, because I think a lot of you know. We have significant activity happening over on the west side of the airport. Uh, we have three different leases right now. One of them is airport administered. Well, they're not leases. There's one that's. Been leased, the other one is still ongoing, and then this one is the airport itself. So we don't lease our own land, it's our own land. Uh, but so this West Cargo Expansion is kind of the, the top one. This is the airport itself doing it. So this is an airport project, uh, and the kind of status update I got on it is that, um. The, uh, designer has been selected. So this is very early in the process. We've only selected a team to design it. It's not moved to any form of construction as a point, uh, and we did want to let you all know that, uh, what is it? The. TCC and well, and the entire community will all be invited for public input during the NIPA process, which is, happens after design. So after the design has happened, then they'll go to, basically they will move forward to selecting a contractor, but there will also be environmental review. Which is when they will also have public input and you will all be invited for that. Um, I don't expect any movement on, on this past the designer for basically this entire year.
I think so, he's.
The next question that you, you had asked was about, uh, the K Lot, which is. I don't think I specifically have a map for this one. Hmm, no, I don't have a specific map for this one right now, but the K Lot is construction. Activity that, well, I shouldn't say construction activity. It is leased, uh, by a company that wants to build general aviation parking. With a direct connection to Lake Hood's gravel strip right here, and it's basically in a triangle here. Right, and I have, I have shared the map before, um, it's somewhere. Um, I will say that you guys requested a status update on it. Um, we are in constant contact with the developers for the K Lot. They have not submitted any of their building plans. So we don't know whether or not they will move to construction this summer or not. Um, so for that one, I have kind of marked a follow up within a couple of months, because. If they are going to construct in the summer, they need to actually submit building permits and stuff to us, uh, which they have not done. So we don't know what, we don't know what their construction plans for the summer are yet.
And I think the ball is in our court to reach out to the designer. We have some con, contacts there, so that's something we need to do.
Perfect. And for all development that happens that border a community, and this could be Spinnard, it could be Turnigan or Sand Lake. The, uh, the actual construct, the, the company behind it is required to at least meet with the community council. So if they say no, let me know. I'll go away then. Um, alright, so the next one was on your list. Was Atlas. Okay, so I have this one right here. So the other major construction project, and actually the largest one that we have over in the West Air Park is Atlas Airlines. Uh, for background, Atlas Airlines is our largest cargo airline. They make up almost fifty percent of all of our cargo traffic, just one company. Uh, so, but the, the odd thing about them is that they have no physical presence here, right? FedEx and UPS have their, their gigantic. You know, campuses here at the Ted Stevens Airport, but what, uh, Atlas has nothing. So they are proposing to build a major campus on the west side. Um, which, okay, so I can just kind of zoom in. This is a rough map. The delineation of the boundaries between where the Anchorage Airport's parking is going to be built. And then where Atlas is going to be built and where the road is going to be relocated are all still up in the air. And the only status update I have is because. are all still up in the air. And the only status update I have is because it is such a large lease application and it involves so much, we are still in negotiation. So the lease has not been signed yet. We are still speaking with Atlas, and I don't really have any updates. It's going to take a long time for such a large construction project to be even approved for just the least. And then we have to move into environmental reviews and construction and that kind of stuff. Any questions on that one? Atlas is, Atlas is quite large in what they, what they want to build over there. Okay, um, the next one is our master plan. The ANC master plan is, should be actually finalized within the next couple of weeks. And then there will be a copy on our website, and then we'll send a copy to you. Uh, and then kind of going back to the, the noise thing. So the one of the things that kind of guides the airport, and it guides every airport in the United States, is that the FAA requires that airport admin, like airport land must be developed to promote aviation, promote you know, more traffic, that kind of stuff, right? So we have a federal obligation to try to develop as much as possible. However, there are certain stipulations, you know, there's environmental stuff, but there is also noise. So the FAA requires us to do a part 150 noise study, and I think we do it every three years. Uh, and we are up for one for this year. So the contractor, Meet and Hunt, they've been officially selected. Uh, and it's going to be a two-year project. It's supposed to start hopefully within the next couple of months. Uh, and once the, I don't know what point, but there's going to be a part 150 noise study committee. And the Turnigan Community Council, as well as Sand Lake, and then, you know, all that, is going to be specifically invited to be a part of it, because we want input on where you think. Like, I, I would assume they're basically microphones, and they will place them in various community and, and study the noise to hear how bad the noise is. So you will all be in, like, anybody can be upon this, I think, the study group, or it might just be uh, maybe the TCC president. I don't exactly know. It's my first time going through one as well. Uh, but you will be invited to participate. Yeah, that was kind of my, my presentation. Was there any other questions anybody else had about the airport?
Mr. Peterson, thank you very much. You have a very, very challenging position, sir. And uh, we appreciate your candor being upfront. And uh, we welcome you to uh the position. Good luck.
Well, well, on that, thank you for that. Uh, so we did officially select our new communications coordinator. So I will, I'm, I'm here. She's currently, uh, she's currently in Fairbanks doing some training. Uh, she'll come back down, which is why she didn't attend, but I will introduce my replacement at the next Turnigan Community Council, and then I will probably move on. I'm still always here. I put, I always put my email in the chat. If anybody ever has any questions, you can always email me anytime. I'm, I'm always here to help too, but uh, I won't be in this job.
Our intention is not, yeah, our intention as a community council is not to outlast representatives of the airport.
Yeah, it'll just be fun. I don't, I don't want to ruin the surprise, but the, the person who's going to take over my job, most of you will know.
Okay, you're, you've done a great job, and your shoes are big to fill.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Eric. Well, well, hopefully we will see you next month at least.
Absolutely. Gene, did you have a question?
I do. Um, about the west side of the, uh, the developments, the Atlas and the other one.
Hmm.
Is the, the main access still the road out to Clithero Center? Is that the only road?
Yes, and the, the road is going to be basically rebuilt to follow, you can kind of see where my mouse is right there, to follow this line, because this yellow line right here, this is the airport's boundaries. So are, the road is going to be relocated to follow along here.
Right, but everyone's going to have to access it from West Northern Lights and Point Warren's off.
Yes.
Correct. There's no plan for any other road, any other access.
No, no, because that, so the airport itself doesn't have any land down here that you could have a road go over here. Um, because this, like, a lot of this land is actually just controlled by the municipality, and I, I, you know, and then this is all Kincaid Park. So I don't think that they would want to build there. And then there's no other way to build a ra, a road other than if you went around the runways from the south.
Okay, do you know how many um employers are going to be at the Atlas hub?
I do not know.
Okay, I'm just trying to get a feel of the traffic that's gonna, the impact on Point Warren's Off Park and West Northern Lights, Earthquake Park, all of that.
And it will absolutely increase. The, the airport administered parking, like the ones that we are building, should not, we're not going to have any employee parking on that side. They're only going to access it from the airport on the, on the east side anyways. They just drive over uh, across the runways. But uh, Atlas itself, because they will have cargo facilities and that kind of stuff, their employees will drive around and, and park on their campus on the West Air Park. So it will increase parking along uh, Northern Lights.
Traffic.
Yeah. The other one, which I should let you all know, because it's kind of an interesting and fun development. Uh, if people have been following 6A, 6A is a development that started nearly almost eight or nine years ago. But uh, pretty quickly, uh, it just evolved into lawsuits between the airport and 6A itself. They control, I don't know why this is so blurry, but kind of where this road is right here. The area south of it, right at the corner of the runways, is owned by this company called 6A. Uh, they have declined into bankruptcy. They did pay the airport back for all their leased unpaid lease payments, so we got our money. However, they declined into bankruptcy, but they were bought by a company called like, it's called the Anchorage Airport Partnership. Uh, but this happened within the last couple of months, and we do not know what their uh, intentions are for this area.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay.
Wow, that, that's a lot to take in, Eric.
I'm always here, and I, I will help. I'll be around. We're, we're going to have brand-new updated construction maps that will have all of our different projects on one. And we're gonna, we'll bring those either at the next one or the one after that.
Well, I did, uh, I did receive one that just, it, it didn't have a lot of detail, but it went out with our uh, meeting notice, a map showing all of the 2025 construction project locations. So we did get that information.
Good.
Okay, well, we need to move on. Thank you again, Eric, because all of this is pretty important. But oh, sorry.
Please, please give uh, our, our welcome wishes to uh, to um, Dave Bronson on his new new position, Eric.
Oh, yes. And Terry wanted me to let you know, when, when you want to have a meeting with Bronson, just let me know. You can just email me.
You are gonna put a, your email or something on the chat. Thank you.
Okay, we are running really far behind now, so let's just kind of pick up the pace, and we welcome our first item under old and new business, um, Brandon. So I'll let you pronounce your last name so I don't get it wrong.
Yeah, I'm uh, Brandon Strauk, and I'm the principal of Rilke Shula. Uh, thank you guys for having me tonight. I really appreciate the opportunity. I'd like uh, to talk a little bit about Rilke Shula, kind of introduce the school to you guys. Um, talk about our timeline, kind of how we got to this point, and then uh, uh, vision for the future. So Rilke Shula is a charter school, but it's also a language immersion school. And uh, as a charter school, we have our own board that represents the charter. And so that board is made up of parents and staff members, and they operate very much like a school board operates. As an immersion school, we operate very much like our other uh, immersion schools in our district, where we have a 50/50 model. Our students are going uh, half the day in an English classroom, and then half the day in a German classroom. Through this program, um, which has been established for 17 years now, and just renewed its uh, 10-year charter again, so we're, we're approved for another 10 years. Our students have been producing great academic outcomes, uh, attendance is high, and we have great community involvement. Um, in fact, just a year and a half ago, we started tracking volunteer hours, and we, we've recorded over 5,000 volunteer hours, just, just in the last year and a half. Um, so it's a really, really engaged community, which makes it a special place to be a part of. Um, kind of talking about our timeline and, and how we got here. Well, Rilke Shula is coming to the end of a 10-year lease in its current facility. And as I'm sure many of you know, with charter schools, um, they often rent a facility from a private institution. And so our, our school, in fact, has had four different locations over those 17 years. Uh, early on, we started in a church, and then we moved to an office building. We moved to another church, and then for the last 10 years, we've been in our current location. And over that time, our school has um, really grown, and we are at currently, we're at 484 students. And it's kindergarten through eighth grade, which is also a unique thing for the immersion model. Um, we're the only one in town that has a 50/50 model all the way through eighth grade, whereas many of our immersion schools go through fifth grade, and then they have uh, strands in our middle schools and high schools. Well, like I said, we're coming to the end of our 10-year lease in our current facility. Um, we have reached out to ASD since the fall of 2023, letting them know like we're approaching the end of our lease. And if anything ever became available, um, we would be interested in exploring that option. Well, as, as we all know, ASD went through its rightsizing initiative um, over the last year. And it happened to be that Lake Hood was a school that was um, chosen or approved for closure. And those students would be going to other neighborhood schools at this time. With that being the case, um, that decision in, in December, um, our community once again reached out to ASD, um, let them know that we would be interested in an ASD facility if one become, becomes available. Fortunately, um, Lake Hood is a facility that has enough classrooms in a square footage to hold our student population, which is very, very intriguing for us, because we are looking for a long-term home. Like I said before, we've had, over the 17 years, we have four different locations, and we really want to establish ourselves in a neighborhood moving forward. Uh, much like other charter schools, um, like Aquarian, who have established themselves in an ASD facility in the neighborhood, and it's really helped them grow and prosper and become a real asset to that community. And that's something that we're looking for as well. Um, and so through this rightsizing initiative that ASD has gone through, um, you know, we've reached out to them and indicated that we'd be very interested in moving into this facility if it became available, and in doing so, take over the uh, maintenance and operations of that facility. Um, the board is currently working through the process of making a decision. Um, ASD administration, the superintendent and his chiefs have recommended to the board that Rilke Shula is relocated into this facility uh, at the meeting, the last meeting in January that they had. I have to double-check the calendar, maybe it's the 21st, 22nd. But if you watch that work session, uh, Jim Anderson and Sven Gustafsson go into great uh, detail about moving um, charter schools into these uh, available facilities, and Rilke Shula is their recommendation for Lake Hood. Now, it is, of course, moving on to the board to make that final decision. Um, they, according to Andy Holloman, uh, in our correspondence, this should be a non-action item at their next meeting on the 18th of February, and then become an action item on the 4th of March. And so it's at that point that we expect them to make a decision, and we'll be able to move, move forward with that. So kind of want to talk about my, my vision here of really becoming an asset to the, to the neighborhood. Um, a very strong educational program. We feel that we can be an anchor for families in that neighborhood, actually a draw for people to move there and raise young families in that neighborhood. And we really feel that we'll get this opportunity to grow together. Rilke Shula has long been a community center. Of course, we're bringing people from all over the city, from Eagle River, from Girdwood. As a charter school, we've had people from, from east to west, north to south. But I think there's a real opportunity to connect with the Lake Hood neighborhood. Although I'm not the end-all decision-maker on it, it, it would be my recommendation to create a neighborhood preference for the Lake Hood area that kindergartners in that neighborhood would have preference, just like siblings currently do, to keep families together in our program, that eventually it would grow as a really, really strong part of that neighborhood, where in the future, students could walk to our, um, walk to the school and be a real, real strong uh, community center. We have a great before and after-school program right now. In fact, about 200 students stay after-school each day and participate in band and art. Um, there's Taekwondo, there's yoga, this, this semester, there's table tennis going on. There's homework support. And uh, beyond that, on, on Saturday mornings, we have a preschool pr- program going on, which is also something I'm all, I'm very interested in as well, is developing a preschool program. And I think that's something that the neighborhood could really value, and it'd be once again, an asset to that community, to that neighborhood specifically. You know, a big part of this is introducing Rilke to, to your neighborhood and to your community council. But we're also looking to build collaboration and um, make a connection here and support one another moving forward, because we'd really, really like to be part of your community and part of your uh, Lake Hood neighborhood and really grow together. And so um, I want to put myself out there once again, kind of after sharing who Rilke Shula is, how we got here with our timeline, and really becoming part of your community and an asset to your community that draws families in. I'd like to uh, take a few questions from you guys.
Sure, thank you so much, Brandon. Uh, does anybody have any questions with regard to the proposal? Steve?
Yeah, I, I was thinking with, with that uh, school, I understand it's um, it's built for over 900 students, so I would imagine that you probably wouldn't lease out the whole school. What is your plan with that?
Yeah, so, so my understanding is that the, the school has a capacity of 469 uh, students. That's my understanding of it at 60,000 square feet. Um, our school is 484 students. Um, it is a little bit over capacity, according to the numbers that I've, I've received for ASD and speaking with administration through this process, as, as we've done some collaboration and planning to move forward with it. The big part to it is that there's enough classrooms. In fact, there are, is a little bit of extra space, which allows us to do small group work, which is very, very important, but also lets us explore those opportunities for uh, before and after-school programs, but also um, finding that space to potentially hold a preschool, which I think would be very unique and something that I'm very interested in pursuing.
Hey, would you be open, would you be open to uh, having the uh, Turnigan Community Council have a place to meet?
Oh, yeah. Well, you know, schools are, schools are our community centers, right? Like, that's where people come together. Families come together, children come together. We all come together to make uh, a real difference and impact in our communities. And so um, we see the same thing at our current facility. There are, there are groups there, Boy Scouts, uh, Girl Scouts, um, adult lessons for German, uh, preschool lessons for, in German. Um, so we really see ourselves as that community center. A big part of what we do are, are community events, in fact. Uh, you know, we celebrate uh, Oktoberfest, Zahn Martinstag, Zahn Nikolaustag, Kriskindlmarkt, uh, Fasching. So we have these community events where, where we uh, draw people together and focus on relationships, right? Like, that's a big part of what a school is, is the relationships that you have between uh, students, staffs, and, and family.
Okay, Jonathan?
Thanks for being here, Mr. Brandon. Uh, regarding your curriculum, um, I, I know of the uh, school for many years, I had some friends whose kids attended. But the, I'm, I'm unclear of the the primary curri- curriculum is German language, correct? But, and, and you mentioned uh, music and, you know, after-school, but, you know, activities, but uh, what, what is the, are there other, is But uh what what is the, are there other, is there other curriculum, for example? Is there math, reading, civics and so forth?
Yeah, great, great question. Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, so our, so our day is structured fifty fifty. So half the day in English and then half the day in German. And so the students will see two teachers. They're on the English side, we actually follow district curriculum. So their reading curriculum falls underneath the science of reading, which is supported underneath the Alaska Reads Act. And we've had really great success with that, honestly. We've seen great growth with our students. So um it's been honestly uh fantastic implementing that program. And so we've seen a lot of growth there. Um, same thing with our math. We use the same district math curriculum as well. And there's a number of reasons for that. Our students, if they do uh move to another school, they're moving into the same curriculum, so they're familiar with it. Uh, we also get support from our district uh for professional development and implementation. And so it really makes sense to us to have that same um curriculum that's going on in our neighborhoods on our English side. Our other side, uh, the German side, works on German language arts, right? Um, sounding out words, letter sounds, uh, the phonics involved with it, phrases, so on and so forth. And then um we have science and social studies. And so a big part, for for example, actually, we were in there just uh last week. Um, and I was giving tours. It's it's our time of year to start uh recruiting kindergarten classes. And we stopped in the second, no, it was a third grade class and they were doing Alaska Studies in German. And it was really cool to see that they were engaging in the same curriculum that we that ASD has got going on, focused on Al- Alaska Studies. But it's translated to German. And so many of the things that um ASD does. Um, we incorporate it into our school. Um, the same standards that our state has for education regarding science and social studies. We just doing, we just doing German, which is a a unique thing. I, you know, I tell those parents when they when they visit, whether or not the child goes on to speak German in their life. What they do get is an experience that is rigorous and supportive. So it's academically challenging and they're engaged in it. And then later on in life, when they're taking on other academic challenges, whether it's calculus, physics, whatever it might be. They have been prepared for that mentally. They've taken on those challenges and been successful. And so that's what I really see it, just like learning music, just like learning math. Academically engaging for the brain and really prepares a person to take on new ch- challenges later in life. Because they have been successful in that rigorous environment early on.
Thank you. Okay, then maybe I can get an English copy of Der Spiegel and uh Del Cio. Right? Okay, thank you for your presence.
Uh, one more Karen, and then we've got to wrap this up.
Yeah, thank you. I um, it sounds like a a potentially great opportunity. If uh you did have the room to uh have some preschool options. Would they um prioritize siblings of your students or would it be open to? Um, to everyone and it it. Cause it just, it sounds like maybe it's going to be a similar amount of traffic or or. Do you, do you have any sense about about that aspect of of it?
Yeah, that that's a really, really good question, Karen, and that's a good point. Uh, charter schools, like our alternative schools in our in our district, do not get busing. And so that is something that would uh be different for the neighborhood. Our students right now are dropped off and picked up by their parents every day. Now, like I shared, we do have a before-school program and an after-school program. So some of that pick-up and drop-off is spread out. Um, right now, we at at pickup, at dismissal time at the end of the day. Um, about two hundred students, two hundred and fifty are are leaving. And we're dismissing those students in about ten to fifteen minutes each day. Um, it moves pretty quickly and just taking some time to understand the um. Layout of of streets right there. It looks like Fortieth is nice and wide. It's got, I noticed a couple of churches on it, so there are different times throughout the week where it has handled. Larger sums of traffic for short periods of time, very much like uh the school would be. Um, and we really could imagine like, once again, those cars getting in there, picking up their students and getting out. In ten to fifteen minutes, right around three o'clock each day. Um, in the morning.
You know, Brandon, I think we're gonna have to cut it off here because we still have so many things on the agenda. But we really appreciate you um contacting us about your uh proposal. And please keep us informed about what the school board ends up doing. We'd love to have an update.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate this opportunity and um I'll talk to y'all later.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, what's the wish of the body? Do we want to go back up to the rest of the executive board report or move on to?
Kathy, we need to deal with the land use committee stuff. We're running out of time and deal with the ordinances.
Okay. Are we going, are we planning to take action on these?
I think we have a request for action because we have testimony we have to consider, so we need to move on to these.
Okay, um, John, I will let you take the lead on the agenda item for um. All these different uh ordinances, amending Title Twenty-One with key focusing on housing for Anchorage. So, go ahead.
Thanks, and I'll try to be efficient here. There's four land use ordinances before the Assembly and Planning Zoning Commission coming up over the next month. Uh, I'm going to suggest that we comment on two of them. And I'll review the nature of those comments tonight and then just briefly talk about the other two, but suggest we do not comment on them. The two main ordinances, one is AO twenty twenty-four one oh four S. It's scheduled for public hearing on Tuesday night before the assembly. And then there's Planning a Zoning Case twenty twenty-five eighteen, which is a site access ordinance. That's scheduled for comment, I think, on the third of March. But comments are due to be submitted in writing by the tenth of um of February. And both of these really have been intended to address revised code requirements and make it difficult for. New economically feasible multi-develop, multifamily housing. Um, and they're part of an ongoing effort by the Assembly and supported by the administration. To make it more feasible and build affordable housing, particularly multifamily housing. And a lot of them, what they try to do is reverse some recent code requirements and put more uh specific um. Requirements and some of the things that came out of the Title Twenty-One revision about ten years ago. And what I think we've heard, and I tend to believe it's true, that, you know, many of the multifamily and the responsible multifamily developers. Have said that some of these specific requirements just constrain the economic feasibility of multifamily development. And that's um, that's the real interest in this. The first one, which is going to be on Tuesday, is AO twenty twenty-four one oh four S. And this is something that Anna introduced back in October. Uh, to pause multifamily residential design standards for a two-year period. And it's been since amended to be for a three-year period. And there's a substitute version out that increases that pause period, as I said, the th- to three years. Uh, Anna did give a presentation to um community members through an FCC meeting, local lens series on uh January twenty-second. And she's also going to be making a presentation on this tomorrow at the uh Assembly Work Session. If anybody's specifically interested in this, you can go online with the Assembly Meetings and tie into it by YouTube and watch what she's going to have to say. This ordinance suspends four parts of the municipal code. Um, that have to do with, you know, requirements for building facades, building spacing. Internal sunlight design features and some landscaping requirements. Um, they also um suspend requirements for subdivisions of mixed-density housing. Uh, that includes a single family. Uh, they suspend requirements for site design for multiple buildings, major site plans for large projects. And also they suspend requirements for site access pedestrian frontage standards such as placement of doors and windows. You know, having served in the Site Access Working Group. You know, that includes several multifamily housing developers and also uh the South Edition Community Council was also represented on that. I've sort of come to believe that some of these current code sections probably do need to be revised to make it easier. Uh, for multifamily housing and am willing to sort of take a chance on it. But there does need to be same safeguards. You know, my recommendation would be that we either support the proposed uh change in the Assembly Ordinance. Or don't object to the proposed ordinance, but subject to adding um a recommendation to Anna Brawley's. Request for an annual review, that this annual review not only takes a look at the effectiveness of the ordinance. But also is an assessment of unintended adverse consequences. So that they can be able to adjust whatever they do with their administrative review or make additional code changes. And Kathy had asked, uh, you know, what was an example of an adverse uh unintended consequence? I think what we've seen with a number of these um. Ordinances to do away with onsite parking has pushed a lot of parking into the streets, which has created snow. Um, removal problems and created safety parking problems. And that's an example of doing something that uh creates a um unintended adverse. Adverse uh consequence. The other thing I'd like to do with our testimony is state that while we recognize the urgent need for more affordable housing. There had been a recommendation to initiate a review and revision of the Title Twenty-One Comprehensive Plan and Twenty Twenty Land Use Plan. Uh, so that the proposed zoning district and code changes are aligned with those plans. Since this recommendation was made, nothing's been done. And I think, you know, I feel and I think Kathy feels it's really important if you're going to continue to. Change the code and change the zoning, there needs to be a responsible um review of. The comp plan and Twenty Twenty Forty Land Use Plan. So at this point, it's too late to submit written comments and anything we say will need to be said in person at the um. Community Council meeting, but I guess my recommendation would be for this first one. That again, we either support it or say that we do not object to it, but add some additional conditions as I have stated. So I guess with that, let me open it up, be, see if there's any comments on that before moving, moving on to the site access one.
Hey, does anybody have any quick questions on what John presented? In a nutshell, which is really much more complicated, but did a good job summarizing.
Yeah, I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead, Jonathan.
Thanks, John. Um, I have significant concerns and I always have. About the off-site parking. Uh, this is a huge can of worms. It's unsafe. Uh, some of us may remember the last two previous years where we had the. Most snow of all time. There were fire trucks that could not get down my street, large fire trucks. There were, there, this is a gigantic public safety issue, not to mention the unmitigated inconvenience. And also lowers property values in many parts of the city. I cannot support any type of recommendation that would waive. Uh, the the current parking situation as it as it's written. I I think that the contractors have to figure this out. Because uh we don't want to end up like the Bronx, New York. And this has already happened and there is no enforcement. The police department will not enforce it. They cannot enforce it. They're, they have a situation where they're dealing with violent crime, all kinds of issues. And the last thing, I mean, when's the last time you saw him even sight a blatant red light runner? So, uh, that's my uh comment and that is the main problem. I'm not too worried about, you know, the elevation and what the building looks like, unfortunately. Uh, if you have a bunch of blank walls, it looks pretty bad without windows and some kind of, you know. Modicum of decorum on the entrance of a of a building. But the one thing that we all know and you have to admit is that. A contractor will build the cheapest building he can. That is based on profitability. But the on-street parking is not viable. And you end up with significant safety problems. Total inconvenience and just go down. Any number of fifty streets in the middle of Spinnard, Midtown, many other places, all over Anchorage. Thanks, John.
Okay, Jonathan, yeah, thank you. I think, I think we definitely heard you. Um, does anybody else?
I have a quick, quick suggestion. If it's the will of the group, we could add part of our recommendation that we do not support. Any further elimination of um creating on-street parking. Now, the last item that we'll talk about tonight under the Land Use Committee is the mayor has put together a working group. To deal with the problems that have been created by pushing cars onto the street. And I am a representative on that working group and in theory, that's supposed to look at some solutions, but you know, the cat's been let out of the bag in many cases, but just some comments.
Yep, that's good input, John. Uh, anybody else want to weigh in on? On this? Um, yeah, I I know that when um, when, when John share, shared this with the board earlier. Um, my concern was the devil's in the details, it always is. And so if you, you know, say, yeah, we're gonna do this and yeah, we're gonna do that. And there will be an annual review, which um, you know, we think is a really good idea to see if. Modifying these Title Twenty-One codes actually make any difference from the housing need side of it of things. If we'd actually see some um expedited development do tied directly to modifying Title Twenty-One Code. Or suspending, in this case, Title Twenty-One Code. Um, but then who's gonna be the judge to rev- make that review, you know? Is it working? That sounds pretty, you know, subjective. And so um, so that's my concern about that. But I think that John has come up with ways where we can, we can be. Um, not opposed to this, but provide some specifics that we do want to. Insert into our, you know, input. To make sure that we're just not, hey, whatever, it sounds good to me. So um with that, John.
And Kathy, one, one quick, one quick thing, I think we could also add to our comments that we would like to have. Input on the specifics of the annual review. I think that's a reasonable thing to ask in our testimony.
Yep.
John, I just want to ask what about the scenario and I, time is a factor, I understand that, but this is a crucial issue. And uh, if you have an annual review or two years, whatever it would be, how would you handle? The already permitted. Uh, construction. That's not built yet.
So I mean, there's the annual.
Annual review.
Well, I mean, the annual review, if something's been built and has created problems, what you would probably do is make changes not to create more of that problem. I think the task of this um uh right-of-way snow and parking management strategy, which is kind of under Land Use Committee. Is to try to go back and see if they can fix the problems they've created. So one is to not create more problems, but then how do you fix what you've already done?
Right, exactly. Thank you.
I think that sounds really reasonable too, because that, yeah, I mean, that's a good point. Um, in one year's time, a developer may not have um scratched any dirt. But has everything all permitted and ready to go and their contractors all lined up and then all of a sudden it's like, okay. Um, maybe this development wasn't such a good idea after all, the proposal. So to have ways to address those specific things would be, you know, the goal for. For John and I and the board to provide the input that we would ratify at our uh March meeting. Because we just don't have the wherewithal to pull together formal comment letters on every one of these that are coming up now. Very quickly with regard to comment deadlines, council comment deadlines and then testifying at hearings. So um, John, do you want to go ahead and continue? I guess, you know, if there's any, anybody else that has any input specific that they'd want our council to reflect. In our um comments on these.
And I would say, is there objection to the, you know, to the. The the suggestion that I laid out uh on our testimony on this uh Assembly Ordinance and it's going to be very similar. We'll go to the PZ. Planning zoning case next. But assuming there's no objection, I think we should go ahead and, uh. Put together a testimony along the lines that we've talked about.
Okay, sounds good.
So the second one is similar, but a little bit. Go ahead.
Need to move?
Probably be a good idea to have a move in a second.
Yeah.
Okay, would someone like to move?
I move to, uh, ratify the comments that we're going to submit.
This is Pat's second. You know, point of order. There's nothing that exists yet that has been submitted to ratify, so it would be more of. Approval of proposal. Or propose.
Sorry, yes, okay. Well, moved. Move the comments that were made here. That they can be put into a, uh, uh, comment letter.
Some of these we may not have time to put into a letter, but will just show up in front of a microphone and testify. Some of them aren't that time sensitive, but some are.
Yeah, I, I would move to make comments along the line suggested and recognize that comments will be ratified at a later meeting.
This is Pat. I'll second Jonathan, John's, uh, comment.
Yeah.
Motion.
Well, John, would you, uh, have a draft, uh, for? The council to look at before. Uh, the comments are made.
I would, I would probably be working on a draft over the weekend. The, the trick is going to be to get them out to the council as a whole. And get comments back on those in time to actually make them on Tuesday evening. If people kind of agree with the intent and the direction that I. Have proposed, if that seems okay.
Yeah, well, thank you in advance. That's.
Okay, yeah, yep. Not, not the ideal situation. So I guess if there's no objection, then let's maybe move on quickly to the planning and zoning case.
Okay.
And that's very similar. And I have been sitting on a working group for about three months on this one and it's, it's similar in which they want to. Change some standards that were actually. During the Title 21 update, but then during a well-meaning. Site access set of requirements that came up about two years ago and those new code requirements created all sorts of problems. For a major, uh, multifamily developers like Cook and the Housing, who I consider to be a really stand-up developer. And so they have really kind of suggested, uh, a number of changes that. And some of these, the devil's in the detail. Change requirements related to driveways, alleys, walkways, sidewalks, building front, frontage. On-site parking and landscaping. To make the code simpler, more economically viable for developers and give the, um. Uh, planning department permit review folks more leeway in making decisions. Now, I would suspect onsite parking is an issue with this. Uh, landscaping could be an issue with this. Uh, driveways could be an issue with this. They also proposed to do something similar that there's going to be an annual review. To see how this is effective. And again, it comes down to the devil in the details. Who does the review? Not only should be effective, but what problems are you creating? And getting input of folks like us and others into what the content of that review is going to be. You know, generally I think this is kind of. It's also a reasonable ordinance and a reasonable compromise among the working group. So I would suggest that we again, support it or not object to it with some. Uh, recommendations that they don't create more on-street parking and our same recommendations, um. Regarding the, um. The nature of the review and what it does in having input to that. I also think that we kind of need to continue to. Keep the heat on the administration and the assembly to say, if you're going to start making these changes willy-nilly. We do need to go back and let's look it up. A review of the comp plan and the 2040 land use plan so that all members of the public. Have an opportunity to weigh in on this rather than this, the things being done piecemeal.
Uh, John, this is Karen Platnikoff and I would, uh, uh, agree with that and I want to. Ask if we wanted to. Potentially, um, emphasize the. On-street parking point. That if the losses there of, of, um, on-site parking result in increases and on-street, that's problematic.
Definitely for both of them. Yep. You're here.
Yeah, that's probably one of the key things without knowing a lot of the detail. And I'm a landscaping gal, so I'd have to see what, um. What could become of that. We end up not seeing a lot of, um. Vegetation involved in, you know, required in any of these developments, but. Yeah, when it comes down to it, parking. Parking is key. So, uh.
So one thing I would say, the second one, well, written comments are due February. Tenth, the hearing's not going to be until March third and we might have more time to circulate. Verbal testimony that we would make and figure out a way to do so will not be, we won't have our meeting. In time in March, but there might be a way to do it. There's a bit more leeway. So, but I would say that we probably have the same request for if you agree with the, um. General intent of the comments, um. See if there's any objections.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Yes, I, I'll make a motion, uh, the second, uh. To approve John's second. Second comment. Dialogue, if you will. To include the comments of which I, I think he knows the gist for sure. Along with the first. Say draft of what we just discussed, points one and then points two. Uh, to be approved.
And I'll, I'll second that.
Thanks Kathleen. Oh no, was that Jean or Kathleen? Sorry, I was looking. Oh, that's Kathleen, okay. So John, do you want to just kind of summarize and? Make sure we know what we're voting on.
Well, I think, you know, again, what we'll do is that we will, I think we will. Say that we conditionally support the changes. Based on. Objection to not creating any more on-street parking and the problems that causes. And that we want the annual review to not only look at efficiency, but look at unintended consequences. And that we would like to have input into the. Sort of the nature and the specifics of that review.
Okay, that sounds good.
Is there a way to put teeth into that, uh, you know, uh, on the annual review, John?
Other than making these suggestions at this point in time, I think the best we can do is make our comments known. And then we would need to work with both the administration and the assembly sponsors to. Insist we have input, let's put it that way.
Understood. Thank you.
Yep. Let me go over and sort of the last two things that came for review that are.
We need to, sorry, John, we need to vote on the, on the motion.
Yep, go ahead.
Let's see, did we do a yes, no, or did we just say we, uh, support?
Any objections?
Yeah, is there any objections? So no objections, so that motion passes. And, um, John will summarize and. We'll move forward with the, and anybody of course is welcome to attend these public hearings that are coming up as well.
And comment, yes.
And, and provide comments as well.
And again, I apologize for having to go through this stuff so fast. It's not the way to do it. The other two ordinances, the first one, which is, um. Twenty twenty-five zero zero two zero going before the planning and zoning commission. What it does is it would remove, it would remove unused bonus provisions in order to increase allowable heights to be in line with the Anchorage 2040 land use plan. And remove unused four area ratio bonuses in favor of more allowable lot coverage. And even as a planner, I'm not quite sure I know what that means, but I don't think it sounds like it's something that rises to the level of us commenting on. So I would say let that one go. And the other one falls into the same category and I'll just, uh, summarize that real quick and then we can see if we have any. But this one actually may be, I hate to say this, this one might have a bit more in, interest. This one has to do with, uh, updating the 2021. Financial thresholds that trigger an administrative site plan review for public park projects. The intent is to raise the threshold from five hundred thousand dollars to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So what this one would do is that. A project, a park. A public park project would have to have a higher. Cost level in order to trigger an administrative site plan review. I don't know that it's a big deal, but Kathy, you might want to say something about this.
Before Kathy does this, I, this is Pat. I move that we extend the meeting fifteen minutes to, um. Nine, to not, to extend the meeting to nine fifteen.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Is there a second?
John, seconds.
Okay.
Second, yeah.
Is there any objection to extending to nine fifteen? Thank you, everybody for hanging in there. Okay, motion passes. Go ahead, John.
Okay, so this one. I don't know if this is a big deal or not. It doesn't strike me as it is, but I don't know what the implications are. Of raising the threshold for a public park project. Uh, and when it triggers an administrative site plan review, it's not anything I've been involved with. It doesn't strike me that it. Needs our comment, but I just throw it out there.
Well, you know, parks. Can, can be a lot of different things and it could be a nice wooded area with a trail and a couple of swing sets, or it could be, um. You know, a massive soccer complex with eight fields. And so. I don't have a good feel about what costs what. And if the original was. Five hundred thousand and I want to jump that up, I, I don't really see the. The, the devil's in the details and that's when community involvement would, you know. Whatever council they're in or neighborhood homeowners association or whatever, if there's some big proposal. I would think they'd want input and they won't have an avenue to do that. If it's, oh, but it's, you know. It, it's only going to be, we're only going to spend five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so we don't need to have an administrative site review. We don't need to have any kind of public comment. We'll just go ahead and do what we want to do without much oversight. Am I reading that right, John? And is that it?
It, it could be. We have a little bit of time on this one. This one is scheduled for a public hearing on March tenth. Um, and so perhaps we. Look into this a bit more and see if it's something that we want to submit comments on and we'll bring it. And we could probably bring those comments and those recommendations. To the council on the, uh, March sixth meeting. That would be my recommendation.
Point of, uh, point of clarification, John. What specifically is the administrative site plan? Who adminis, who is? Who is the administration? Uh, who is, how does it work? Very.
That would be done, I think, within the planning department and perhaps, uh, engineering too is my guess. They would be looking at this to see if it complies with code.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep. So I recommend we look into this one a bit further and we can provide an update on whether or not we think we want to submit. Testimony verbally. Um, and we could talk about this at our meeting on March sixth.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I, I feel, I feel good about that too, so. Okay, that will go on our March agenda.
So let's maybe go into the land use committee here real quick and there are three things, uh, one, two of which will be relatively quick. The first one is this right-of-way snow and parking management strategy. And I think the municipality has realized that they have created a problem. By doing away with all this onsite parking and pushing cars onto the street. And so they have put together. A, uh, working group, which I was also asked to join. And they'd like to try to find a way to share some information on this. There is kind of a. Two-page flyer, uh, from Tom Davis that kind of talks about. Their Anchorage snow and parking right-of-way and parking management strategy. And it also sounds like there are going to be some public meetings on this. There is going to be. Uh, a public event of some sort potentially later this winter. Uh, and then there'll be a second public event next year. So they have a consultant on board. And there's actually going to be a third public event in 2026. So this is probably a pretty significant effort to, um. Try to deal with some of the problems they have created with, um. Putting cars into the street, causing problems with right-of-way and snow storage. What I can do is perhaps provide a more detailed update on this and try to provide some materials. For folks to review when the agenda goes out. So you have a chance to look at it next time for the March sixth meeting. And if I get any information from Tom Davis as to when the, uh, public event is going to be the first one, I can let everyone know that. This is one we will definitely want to pay a lot of attention to.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds appropriate since that seems to be. You know, especially in older parts of Turnagain where the roads are so narrow, some don't have sidewalks and then. If you. Add more housing with ADUs and so forth. Uh, allow more condensed development on lots and then not, not require onsite parking. It's a mess.
Yep.
Yeah.
And Kathy, maybe what I'll, what I'll do is I'll, I'll send you this flyer that's come from, uh. Uh, Tom Davis and maybe we can figure a way to get it out to the group as a whole, but I would, uh. I'll provide an update on March sixth on where this thing is going.
Okay.
Okay, so the next is the mayor's housing strategy and I had given some input on that informally, having been asked by Graham Downey before Christmas. And run some of that past Kathy and so I did provide the input. They have put out a two-page housing strategy. There's nothing new. But what I'm finding is the number of things that are being done on housing right now are nearly impossible to track. Um, I was sitting in at a meeting today, which was, uh, the Economic Development Assembly Committee and I found out that they had put out. Late last year, a, um, manufactured housing report. That talks about the affordability and some of the problems in, you know, developing new manufactured and trailer housing, which is. I think important to a number of folks in our district. And there's also a move afoot to, um. Defer property taxes on multifamily housing in specific areas like downtown and transit-dependent quarters. So the number of things that are going on related to housing, we have. It's very difficult for us to stay informed of it. And, you know, I think one of the things that we want to do is perhaps. Find a way to perhaps put a burden on the administration and/or our assembly representatives. To keep us better informed because we're just stumbling across stuff at the last minute.
Absolutely, uh. You know. Certain incredibly germane. Aspects, uh, points. You know, proposals can slip through a crack and all of a sudden it's, well, how did this happen?
Exactly.
Yeah, these are coming one after the other, after the other, like, you know, just, uh, waves that. Pretty well consume and, you know, it's unfortunate that. Anna, who, you know, represents our area and is, you know, uh, neck deep in a lot of these. Uh, because this is a, a real key thing that she is focusing on as an assembly member. Um, but then she had, she wasn't able to attend our meeting tonight. I'm sure she had, um, something that was. Just as important or, or more, but we don't have a lot of face time with her as far as getting down into the details, a lot of this. And I know if we ask for it, she would make the time. So that's kind of goes back to a land use committee meeting kind of. Um, event where we can't cover details. In our general membership meeting. Like we are right now, what's we, you know, going through things, so, um. So what, then the last one is, um.
Fish creek, let me just say, I suggest that we. We draft a request to bring before TCC at our March meeting that would go to both, uh, our assembly members and the municipality. To, um. Keep us routinely informed of developments on housing studies and things along those lines. That's why I'd asked earlier about whether we wanted to. keep us routinely informed of developments on housing studies and things along those lines. That's why I'd asked earlier about whether we wanted to bring back the mayor's report or immunity report at our meetings, because we're just not getting informed. So I will, I will draft the suggested request that we can talk about at the next meeting that we may give to, again, the assembly and mayor and kind of, um, cajole them to keep us better informed.
Okay, that sounds like a plan.
Thanks, John. Both, both assembly members and, but, you know, whatever, what other other resources, individuals.
Yep. So as you were saying, Kathy, the last thing is Fish Creek, and, you know, we had the, we had the update by Noah King and Matt Edge last meeting. And I got to admit that I had expected more detail out of that update. I was myself disappointed. And, and we had sort of told them that we wanted to have a specific land use committee meeting. So I did send an email, having worked on it with Kathy, to Noah in the middle of January, saying that we would like to have a specific land use committee meeting to discuss the project in more detail and the issues raised in our resolution prior to their open house, it's scheduled for March 19th. And, um, invite all the key stakeholders and also, um, give them four specific geographic areas and topics to discuss in detail. You know, which had to do with, you know, the portion of the S1 alternative and the properties next to Resolution Drive. Uh, the location of where the route crosses, the driveway connecting the McCary property, the, uh, location, uh, moving the coastal trail north into coastal wetlands, uh, and the tie-in with Fish Creek, which was kind of recent news to us. And the last one, potentially looking at the La Honda Drive Southern Route Alternative. So I sent that to Noah, didn't get a response back for two weeks and called him up early this, this week and said, hey, you know, no response, you know, can you, um, give me an update? And they have agreed to hold a meeting with us. They suggested the date of March 17th. And I know Kathy kind of wanted to check with the board and members. Um, that date does not work for me, and I'd really like to be at that meeting. Um, so it looks like we will have a meeting with them sometime in March prior to the open house.
Yeah, the, the emails exchanged just, um, almost right before we came online with this meeting, um, was then, um, the 10th or the 11th was recommended and.
Yeah, that, that was my suggestion, and that also gives us a week before the open house, so we can digest what they tell us.
Yeah, and so, um, now I don't have my stuff in front of me. I have an avalanche, paper avalanche that just went off the table. So I don't have my calendar, but, oh, I take that back. I do have my calendar. So, um, I'll be testifying on behalf of the council at P&amp;Z meeting on the 10th of March on the 10-year, um, community council boundary changes. So.
So that might not work, okay?
Sorry, what?
That, that, you're right, the 10th is a P&amp;Z meeting, so maybe we shoot for the 11th.
So, yeah, the 11th, as far as I know, would be, okay. So do you want to respond to Matt Edge that, that we could have a land use committee meeting on March, uh, 11th?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay.
Excuse me, John and Kathy, this is Kathleen Blaski. Could you, um, are we talking about a, a Tuesday evening meeting?
Yes.
That would be the 11th, correct.
Yes, okay, in the evening. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, we would hold it. Probably we'd start it at 5:30 and, and for this one, we'd probably want two hours of 5:30 to 7:30.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
If they're willing to, if they're, will, you know, agree to that kind of timeframe.
Yes, thank you.
And, um, if, correct me if I'm wrong, John, Matt put in his email kind of clear, or maybe it was you. Now, I don't remember which one said, I think it was Matt saying, this is not like a big open to the public. Everybody can come and participate. This would be a closed meeting for our committee members. The problem is, we don't really have a definitive list of committee members. It, it never has worked that way, where you had to sign in and agree to become a committee member. But I think all interested parties from Turnigan, um, would be able to provide input and ask questions, and if there's others outside of Turnigan, you know, all of these have to be open, be open to the public.
Yeah, I would agree. I think we need to push back on that.
Well, you know, but allowing who can actually participate versus be more of an observer um, is probably where we draw the line and try and keep things in control, because, uh, we know there's so much passion about this trail project that, um, you know, we could pack 100 people in there and they all want to say something. So, um, so we'd have to be careful with our, uh, how we, how the meeting is managed. And, and Matt Edge actually is the one that recommended that, and so I think.
Agreed.
He understands. He, it doesn't, he doesn't want to see it get out of control.
Right.
Okay, so John, you'll contact Matt about, um.
Yep.
A March 11th meeting?
Yep.
Okay, that is the end of the land use committee report, and, um, I'm going to go back up to executive board report and see if you guys have any, um, let's see, well, I did want to point out, because we do this every year, turning it, all the councils receive a, uh, list at the beginning there from the municipality with regard to traffic calming qualified and cold streets lists. And again, my paperwork is not within reach, but, um, there were no Turnigan streets under the qualified. There haven't been for quite some time. And, um, my only comment was, one of the cold streets was Forest Park Drive and, um, but Forest Park Drive is being funded by other means, and it's going to go ahead and get some traffic calming and, and upgrades, so it wasn't really relevant to, um, that one anymore. Uh, we did get notice from, uh, from the, um, powers that be that the West Anchorage Snow Dump over in Connors Bog that our council followed for, um, at least a couple of years actively. Construction will start on that snow dump, um, in the near future. And, uh, so the bulldozers will be running over in Connors, Connors Bog. So, um, the 10-year community council boundary review, I, I mentioned that normally they were going to have a meeting, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, where we're going to have their uh, public hearing, um, coming up next week on the 10th of February, but they moved it to, uh, they extended it to, um, March 10th. So, uh, I'll be testifying on behalf of the council.
Three minutes, Kathy, in case you want to pick one or two.
Thank you, and then I'll give you an update with regard to, um, uh, we got notice from Great Land Trust, or excuse me, Anchorage Park Foundation, because I reached out to them with regard to when indigenous, um, mark, place markers would be put in, uh, along the, um, coastal trail by Fish Creek Estuary and the, uh, Spinnard Beach Park, and I kind of forgot about the one with Earthquake Park and was told, oh, two of those have already been installed, the one at Earthquake Park and the one at, um, Spinnard Beach Park. But they did it in October when it was cold and snowy, and they still want to, um, do some kind of a celebratory event sometime, maybe spring, summer, and would like the council to provide any input or ideas. So just let that simmer, and I can get back to them if we've got some specific things that we think we want. And as far as the one up by the estuary, they are not looking at installation that until 2026 or 2027. And that's something that we want to keep a real close eye on, because they, they want to, as Beth Norland put it, oh, we're going to completely redo that area along the coastal trail where there's a donor signage and benches and overlook and some vegetation. And, um, that's where they want to put a place marker as well. So we want to be a part of that and not just, you know, be notified behind, uh, after the fact. So, um, unless anybody else has any other questions about other items in executive board report, I think that what we call, we covered a lot of ground this evening, and I know time management is a problem. Um, it, once the agenda starts getting jumbled up, um, then everything's kind of out of skew, and so I'll try and do a better job with that. But it looks like at least for the remaining of the session, we should probably put the legislative report almost at the top, because then they're in and they're out, and, um, maybe even assembly, I'm not sure. So we'll see, uh, when the board sets the agenda for next month, we'll have it, we'll have a, a pretty heavy discussion about how maybe to rearrange our agendas, try and balance things out a little bit more.
This is Pat. I move, we adjourn.
Thank you, Pat. Can I have a second, please? Steve, is there any objection? Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, so much.
Thanks all for your patience.